Okay, we're on.
See if I can do this. Okay, this is a regular meeting, not so regular, of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and was also sent to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call, please, Jen.
Mr. Nuchesny? Mrs. Quigley?
Here.
Mr. Ridgway?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Ludman?
Here.
Dr. Lauffer?
Here.
Mr. Kinsella?
Here.
Mrs. Neff?
Here.
Mr. Leader?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one item. We should also indicate for the record that in addition to the Open Public Meetings Act notice that we issued at the beginning of the year, as you just indicated for the record, we also issued a supplemental Open Public Meetings Act notice. We're in gen sent a revised notice to two newspapers for publication, also posted it, also sent it to the clerk, advising that the meetings would now be broadcast virtually. That information has also been included on the website and all that information is found there as well as instructions as to gain access to the meeting. Thank you.
If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mike, if we can figure out for how you can give me a tic-tac, this is going to be a regular old meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Okay, so I understand that we have one or two members of the public that are in attendance. We're obviously not in our normal forum. We are proceeding tonight with administrative items for the purpose of doing a dry run. This is an official meeting of the zoning board. We have a few, we have a resolution and minutes on the agenda under the administrative items. Mr. Nuchesny?
Yep. First thing on the docket, we have the resolution for the Gilbertson case. I was not at that meeting, so I will pass on if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the minute the Gilbertson resolution as submitted.
So moved.
Give a second.
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman? Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Next item.
It's, we have approval of the minutes for the March 5th meeting and I was again not at that meeting, but I want to thank Jen for an amazing job on those minutes. It was, I read them and I felt like I was sitting in there really, really well.
Thank you.
Also, I'll be staying because I only joined the meeting at 10:15 or it was pretty late when I joined it.
So I will not be able to move this if somebody could make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted by Jen.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 5th.
Give a second.
Mr. Ludman? Okay. Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes. Jen, how many attendees do we have on the call right now?
There are eight attendees.
Okay. So we're going to move to public comment. That is the entirety of the administrative agenda that we had anticipated moving through tonight. I'm not sure who's here. I know that Mr. Akins had been here. I know that Mr. Bruno was notified that we were having this meeting this evening and that his client is on the agenda to proceed in June, which would be the first meeting where we would conduct new business via Zoom. So what I want to do before I open to the public is that I want to ask if there are any board members that have any questions about the process and the protocol of proceeding in June with new business. And maybe I'll just finish by congratulating everybody for getting signed on. We were on time. So far, so good.
Would you mind just going over the process a little bit so we know what to expect in terms of getting packages? Or I think there was some discussion during our practice session about how the packets will be distributed.
Yeah, so Jen, we can circle back on that, but I think that what we decided was that we were going to attempt to circulate packages if possible or make them available for pickup. Any conclusion on how we're going to deal with that?
I mean, I can drop them off at your houses. Allison also, or Borough Clerk, she offered to help me as well. So that can definitely be done because I know everyone wants to receive paper copies of everything, which is fine.
But would it be more comfortable for you, Jen, or safer to put the onus on us to come to a common pickup point or something?
I mean, I feel fine. I mean, I'll be outside. I'll leave it on your porch, you know, and if you feel comfortable with that, I could also, if you wanted to tell me that you wanted to pick them up, I could leave them in the lobby at Borough Hall if you let me know what day and, you know, around what time. That can be done as well.
I mean, I personally feel that for safety reasons, this may or may not be a good idea. I would be completely comfortable if Jen sent me a PDF with all the surveys, all the maps, everything. I wouldn't, I don't need any paper copies, at least for, just me.
I'm okay with that, Jen.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll send an email out within the next, either tomorrow or Monday, and ask specifically, and you can respond to me individually and let me know how you prefer to receive the information.
And if we got the PDF, then you would be able to follow up with any additional documents that are submitted so we'd have a complete.
Yep, we're planning on having everything posted on, I'm sorry. We do, we are planning on having everything posted on the Borough website as well for any interested parties to view. So that will also be there.
That's good.
I would be fine with the PDF then as well.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yep, my suggestion would be if somebody wants to opt out of the delivery so we don't go through the effort, but then I would suggest you PDF it to everybody so that they have, everybody has it by PDF.
Sure, I can do that.
Jen, PDF is fine for me as well.
So that was a question about materials. Does anyone else have a question about process? Okay.
Todd, I just have a question, just one more time. Is it going to be very clear for anybody presenting to the board that the only materials they can show are the ones that have been already sent to Jen and therefore we have the PDF off, like no new materials during the meeting? Or do we decide something else?
No. Mike, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that what we have concluded is that we are replacing a live meeting with a Zoom meeting. We are encouraging applicants and objectors to plan in advance and provide the materials to Jen so that she can get them uploaded and share them. But if on the evening of the hearing there are new materials in order to have a good meeting, I think we need to try to do what we can to accommodate whatever may develop. So we were going to try to deal with that on a case by case. And if it became a problem for the applicant with regard to objector testimony or materials, then we would need to carry a meeting so that the, whatever was intended to be introduced could be circulated so everybody could see it. But again, sort of dealing with it on a case by case.
Yeah, I think that's accurate, Todd. The fundamental supporting documents for the application should be on file no less than 10 days in advance as the MLUL requires. But obviously, things that may be tweaked in response to perhaps the board professional staff's reports may be the kind of thing that are going to be provided subsequently. As you indicated, if an objector attends the meeting and there's something they want to present, we may be left with trying to get as far as we can into that meeting and then carrying it to the following meeting so that that material can be circulated to everybody in advance. It's a new process. We're going to play it out as best we can. But I think ultimately, we want to just make sure we achieve a full and fair process for everybody concerned.
In terms of the PDF files that will be sent to us, Lele, maybe you could enlighten me. How do you look at the stuff on your computer and the meeting at the same time? Do you print it all out before the hearing or?
It depends if you have two screens, if you have, or if you have three screens, like Adam.
So you need multiple screens then?
Probably. Multiple screens or print out some of it.
Right.
That's a good question. You know, I'm going to try to work with two screens for the next meeting.
So one screen would be the materials that you are reviewing, like as though they're on the paper, and then you take part in the meeting on the other screen?
Yeah, I think that's what I'm going to try to do.
And presumably, they'd all be marked, right, Mike?
Well, we're going to have to mark exhibits as exhibits, yeah, somewhere along the line. Whether we do it in advance or we do it at the hearing, we'll see.
Well, there's also the issue of applicants, council, and objectors do have the capability technologically of producing the information for the screen so that we can see it. So they may be introducing it into a window on your Zoom panel and pointing to things or identifying through the exhibit something. So it kind of depends on the nature of the presentation.
Similar to what Jen did with the flag.
So it would be sort of like marked for ID because it was part of the PDF file?
No, we'd mark it as an exhibit.
Jen's going to mark what she has in the office the same way she normally would. Your package is going to come unmarked the same way it normally comes unmarked. New materials provided at the actual meeting time will be marked by Jen for the purpose of the permanent record to the extent that you get them either by email or whatever. They will not be marked and you'll just need to sort of fumble through it. We all will.
Okay. Sounds like it might work kind of smoothly.
And Pat, you can, if you have just one monitor, you can reduce the Zoom window down to, you know, a quarter of its size. You could have, I could, I just did that on my laptop here and I could put up another PDF and one screen is mine.
Well, Adam has three, so maybe he'll share one.
But you can, you can do that one.
I just, I just reduced it in order to be able to see the agenda and it worked fine. And you actually had a little box with whoever's speaking so you could just see me for two hours. Okay.
Well, I'll have to do what my kids keep telling me to do. Watch the YouTube demonstrations.
You know, Mr. Chairman, before you open it up to any interested parties that may be present, maybe one other question too, because I know in the notices, we also took great pains to not only provide the instructions for people to log on that have web access, we also provided information that if someone did not have web access, they could call in either with a landline or a cell phone. And we also provided a contact number and an email so that if there were any interested parties who were having difficulty or needed help or needed instruction beyond what was on the website, beyond what was in the Open Public Meeting Act notice, they could call in either to Jen or Joe or email to either and be provided assistance. So maybe it might not be a bad time just to check. Do we know if anybody has either called in or emailed indicating that they had some problem or were having some problems?
Not to me, no. They have not.
Great.
Yeah, not to me either.
Thank you.
And Jen and Joe, you're able from your position relative to the hosting, you can actually see the attendees and they have been advised that if they have a comment that they can raise their hand physically and you will then identify them and recognize them at the appropriate time, correct?
That is generally correct, although right now, my screen, my attendee screen is not showing any stats. Jen is yours.
Yes.
Okay, Allison, yep, Allison just raised her hand. So that's good.
And Todd, I did make you a co-host. If you scroll down to the bottom of your screen now, do you see something that's in the middle that says participants?
I do.
If you click on that, on the left, right-hand side of your screen, you should see the list of panelists.
Panelist window.
And then at the top, it should also say attendees. So you can see, it should say nine attendees. If you click on that, you can see who is in attendance right now.
I think we can all see it. I can see it as well now that you mentioned it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, good.
So do we want to recognize Allison since she raised her hand? Maybe she's got a point to add to this?
I just, I actually would like to just make sure that we've closed out what we've got. Allison may have something related to that, but let's just, are there any other questions directly related to what we're talking about or process for next month? We can, we can circle back at the end if there's new questions that come up. I'm recognizing with the attendees that Allison is first, she's got her hand raised. But I see that we have Mr. Garcia who represents Fairhaven Retail. I also see that we have Mr. Akins who represented the Gilbertsons as well as Mr. Gilbertson. So there may be some communication there with regard to substantive matters. So if there's nothing further, why don't we move to the public? Allison's hand is now down, but I don't, I'm not sure if Allison is, has a question or comment.
Judy has a question? And Allison?
Let's start with Allison, please.
Allison, you're on. Unmute.
Yep, I'm unmuted. You guys are just doing a good job. I'm listening just to see if I can back Jen up in any way for the next meeting. But you guys are clear. I could see you all. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
I see that Judy has her hand raised.
I will allow her to talk now. Judy? She's using an old version of Zoom, so the only way she can talk is by promoting her to panelist. Want to have a guest appearance? Make her a guest panelist, hang on. There you go. Judy, you can unmute your phone.
Oh my gosh, I don't want to be seen though.
You're in.
Hi.
Too late now. Update your Zoom and you'll be able to be incognito.
I just took my picture off, yes?
You did not.
I did not? Oh, great.
We can stop it for you. There you go.
And for the record, and for the record, we should indicate that this is Ms. Judy Fuller.
This is Judy Fuller, 76 Allenwood Lane. And really, I just wanted to check and see everybody was okay. And I also wanted to say that I hope you all appreciate how lucky and how lucky you are to have Jen working with you and for you because I know that this is something that I could, I doubt very much if I could have carried it off at all.
That is not true.
You definitely could have, Judy.
But, but it is true that we are very fortunate to have Jen and I'm so glad, Judy, that you recognized her because we should have thought of it sooner. Thank you, Jen, you've done a great job.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
I look forward to being able to see you in person someday.
Soon, hopefully.
Yeah, you can take me off the panel now.
Thanks, Judy.
Okay. So we are still open to the public and as I mentioned, I do see a number of names that would seem as though they might have been interested in commenting either with regard to old matters or upcoming new matters. And I certainly welcome any questions or comments from any of those parties at this time. Any reason to be concerned that they wouldn't know how to raise their hand and show that they are interested in commenting?
Just those of you who might be dialing in on a phone, and I don't believe there are any because I'm not seeing any phone icons, but if you are a phone, star nine will allow you to raise hand. Let the record reflect none.
Okay. So. Gotcha.
There are no other attendees with any interest in participating at the moment. I'm muting.
So Jen, with regard to the upcoming meeting in June, the agenda includes Fairhaven Retail's challenge of the decision of the zoning officer, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Delton for Hendrickson. It was the revisit for the side yard setback. He asked to be on the agenda as well.
Just those two?
We're still waiting to hear back for the Katie application from Mr. Brodsky if he wanted to proceed. But those were the three that were scheduled for the last meeting that we were supposed to have that was canceled.
Okay, so, Mr. Irene, that raises a question for me. Katie is a matter which I will be recusing myself from. Do I have to go to the back of the room? Do I have to go into the den? What do I do?
Interesting question. My suggestion is we're just going to block you out. And if we can't do that, I guess we could ask you to leave the meeting and then we could send you a text and tell you to come back into the meeting.
I could make him an attendee. I could make you an attendee.
Okay, that's fine. So we can't, we would not be able to hear him unless you.
Correct.
There's your answer.
Yeah, I don't, just don't think you want to see me as part of the panel. So as long as you move me to the side.
You'll be, yes.
Good.
And we did get the paperwork for Fairhaven Retail already, right?
Yes, and for the Katie application as well. Delton would be the only one that I would have to send you anything.
And the only thing on that, Jen, once we just ascertain that the folks who are going to proceed do want to proceed using the Zoom platform, we'll have to get them the information to include in the notice and they're going to have to do new notices.
Correct, they all know that too.
Very good, thank you. And I believe that was in the letters we sent out.
Yep.
So when Fairhaven Retail proceeds, which would be the first matter that we're hearing in June, we're also going to have Mr. Porczynski and there will be direct examination of Mr. Porczynski. And so they will be joining as a panelist and they will be asking questions Hollywood Square style. Right, Mike? I mean, is there anything different than what we're doing now?
No, I don't, I'll leave the logistics and the technological effects to Jen and Joe, but yeah, just, just as if we're doing it now. We would see who's asking the question. We would see who's answering the question.
I think though, one of the points is if they're an active applicant, that you're actually hearing that application. You'll probably promote them into panelist mode so they'll be on screen with you as you're seeing yourselves now. I think that's the way that would go, no?
Whatever makes it work, Joe, that they can see all and hear all and we can hear that person when they speak and the attendees can hear them? If that means making them a panelist, I'm okay with that.
That's probably the way it would work. It'd probably create a better record as well.
I think so.
So would that apply also to the lawyers and?
Whoever, whoever I think is part of their application team. Now, they may not have all of their professionals at the same time. They may bring in a planner subsequent or later and then you can promote that attendee into panelist mode as they see, as they want to make their case. I'd leave it up to the person driving the application.
Is there any way to configure the screen so that we give front and center to the, to the presenters?
Speaker view?
Yeah, you can go to what's called speaker view and that'll only allow the person speaking to be the visual participant. And then the other people will surround, the other panelists will surround that person. If you go to speaker view on your top right of your screen, you'll see what I'm talking about.
No, I'm familiar with that and that does, that does exactly the desired effect. That's good. Okay. Last call, comments from the audience. Mr. Garcia in particular, since I imagine that you will be presenting in June, I would like to take advantage of any opportunity to work out any quirks, work through any questions so that we can try to proceed in a relatively unclunky fashion in June. But if there are no questions, then that's fine. I just want to make sure we've got an opportunity to resolve them.
Betsy's raised her hand. We can allow her to speak. I'll bring her in. Betsy, you're on.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
I'd really, on behalf of the Borough, I would really like to thank the entire board for the time, the effort, the professionalism that they have put into this process. The fact that you've been able to move Borough Business along tonight. You took care of old business. You're planning the process for June to attend new business. There are incredible challenges that you're working out and overcoming and I just think you're doing an amazing job and thank you.
That's super nice, Betsy, thank you. You know, just as a resident, I know how much council is doing. I know how busy the administration, the administrators have been moving forward with the important business of the Borough. This is one of those times where you feel very lucky to be a resident of a small community that cares about one another like Fairhaven. Betsy, you're a huge part of that, so certainly thank you from my family.
Second.
God bless.
Okay, disabled, I've got Adam Garcia with a hand up. We'll allow him in if you'd like.
Please. Yeah, just, just Mr. Garcia, just obviously, we don't want to discuss the merits. So any procedural questions? We're happy to kind of go over here.
No, no, I just wanted to mention that we will attempt to submit any exhibits in advance so everyone has them. Because I think, as you remember, I had a packet of exhibits the last time. So I think it'll just make the most sense if I send that package over in advance of the meeting and I think that's probably easier.
Could you also, could you also send, could you also send PDFs, Adam?
Sure, yeah, I'll send the whole package. Do you want it as just one PDF package or do you want them as individual exhibits?
My, my suggestion is you may want to do them individually because I don't know if you're going to, unless it's not a particularly large packet and you're going to introduce it all as one exhibit, you may want to do them individually so then you can pull them up on the screen as you go.
Okay.
But I leave the logistics to you. However, it's going to be best to present it.
Sure, we'll, we'll look into it and do whatever makes the most sense.
Yeah, but when, when you send the package, if in addition to the hard copies, if you could also send a PDF set, that way it'll be easier for Jen just to distribute it and also put it on the website.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, are you able to, to operate with video? Is that the, is that a choice? You don't want us to see your pajamas? I just want to make sure.
I put a shirt on today, so I'll, am I not operating with the video right now?
You're not.
You're not.
Oh. I'll figure that out. Because usually, I'm on my phone, but I can, I'll figure out.
Hey, hey, we haven't, we haven't made him a, we haven't promoted him. Let's promote him to panelist and see if his video comes up, okay? There you go. He's promoted to a panelist. Let's see where he is. I don't see his video there. Are you, can you still speak, Adam? Are you on?
No, he hung up.
He's not in the panelist panel either. And he's not in the attendee, he's.
Oh, here it is. Maybe it just took a little bit.
Maybe he was hopping off and hopping back on.
He's connecting, he's connecting now. There he is.
Does that work?
Yes, perfect.
All right, there we go. Kick me off for a second, but, but I'm good now.
Great. So my, my, my second comment was for Mike. Does it make sense to try to organize exhibit numbering in advance if Adam knows what he's going to put up?
We can certainly do that, Mr. Chairman. If Adam wants to call me and we can kind of run through the list, you know, we can pre-mark things. We can certainly do that.
I think it might help keep things rolling smoothly for June, if it's possible.
We can do that. Not, not an issue at all.
Okay.
Anything else from Adam Garcia before he gets demoted back to attendee?
Nothing else from me.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you for joining on tonight. I'm sure that it'll be easier in June for, for having had the opportunity to connect tonight.
Thank you. I think this was pretty smooth, so good job, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you. Back to attendee?
We've accidentally raised expectations. We're sure to disappoint in June.
Set the bar very high.
Right, exactly. Okay, so we adopted the Gilbertson resolution tonight. I see that Mr. Akins is here. He was able to raise his hand before. I assume there's no comments or concerns related to that. Is there any final business that we need to address tonight? Any last questions with regard to procedures, anything with regard to the old business? Great. You think Ms. O'Brien? Ms. O'Brien, no comments from you tonight? Ah, there it is.
You're on, Susan.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I can hear you, not see you.
No, for change, no, except that Todd needs to be closer to his microphone.
Oh, that's a very helpful comment. Thank you. I don't even know where the microphone is. It must be on my laptop. Thank you. That's very useful information.
Okay. That's it.
Ki-doki.
Thanks, Susan. Okay.
Nothing else, nothing else on the attendee screen. We're clear.
We're good. We nailed it.
Well done. And Joe and Jen, thank you again. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, too, for all your help.
We need a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
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 Everybody stays safe. Nice job and thank you very much.
Be well. Thank you. Good night.
Good to see everybody.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks, Joe.
See you around town.